Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us for our Millbrae Special Planning Commission Committee. I mean, the Special Planning Commission meeting on December thirteenth. Thank you for joining us today, and this is being done via video conference again. Via via video conference only. Sorry, my words are not coming out today. But thank you. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner John Nagrell.
Here.
Commissioner Wong. Not yet. Commissioner Quigg.
Russell.
Vice Chair Davis.
She's waving her hand, just to note that she's waving her hand, I think. Are you not able to hear us? Oh, it seems like she can hear us, but she's having a hard time with the audio.
It looks like she's having trouble maybe muting. Okay, and Chair Joe.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead. Commissioner Wong is in now, so let me just promote him.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening, Commissioner Wong. Welcome. And we just did the roll call, but I guess we can, we can say he is here now.
Yes, Commissioner Wong, thank you.
Present.
Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Do we have the flag?
We do. We'll share it right now.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Let's go on to item number two, item number one, which is agenda review. Do we have any items that we need to review in terms of the agenda? Any final questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to item number two, which is the approval of our meeting minutes for the, and we have one set, which is for the regular meeting minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have any, do we have a motion or any comments?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion from Commissioner Buhel, second. Second from Commissioner Quigg, raising her hand. And can we have the vote, please?
Commissioner John Nagrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, those are hand raised and then thumbs up.
And Chair Joe.
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes approved five zero.
Before we continue, do we need to take a little break to make sure that Commissioner Davis has asked, can you hear us at least? Seems like she can hear us. And then maybe, because I want to make sure you're able to comment.
You also want to call in on the cell phone or?
That might be. Okay, I think she's in the process of doing that. No, she can't do it. Okay. Okay. Well, we'll go on to the next item, because I don't want to delay things, but we'll continue to go on and hopefully Commissioner Davis will be able to. I think she's logging off and trying to log back in. We'll go to item number three, which is the public communications portion. So this is reserved for any persons wishing to comment on any items that are not on the agenda, but are under the purview of the planning commission. We do ask everyone to have no more than three minutes to speak. Do we have any speakers? Anyone wishing to speak?
There are no hands at this time, so we just want to keep it in the room.
Okay. Okay, so if we don't have any hands, we're going to just continue on with our main item of today, which is a public hearing. This is for two thirty-one Millbrae Avenue, six twenty and thirty Rollins Road, and two oh one, two thirty, and two thirty-one Adrian Road. I will not read all the parcel numbers, but they're in the agenda. This is a public hearing for a site development plan, a design review permit, a vesting tentative parcel map, and height exception and conditional use permit to allow for an approximately five hundred seventy thousand square foot life sciences campus on an approximately four point seven one acre site located within transit, within the transit oriented development and employment center slash light industrial zones within the Millbrae Station Area Plan Development District. This project involves demolition of all existing structures and the construction of three separate life sciences buildings, an amenity building, and above-ground parking structure and realignment of the city property slash right-of-way. And then there was also project environmental determination that is in the agenda, which I will not read, so I'll allow. I'd like to just go ahead and go forward with the staff report. I do see, I think Commissioner Davis is not back with us.
I'm promoting her to panelist. She is back.
Okay.
So I'll just keep trying to promote her.
Okay, please, please continue to work on that. And in the meantime, let's go ahead with the staff report, please. Who's getting our stuff?
Good evening, Chair Joe and planning commissioners. My name is Susie Panetta, and I'm the Senior Consulting Planner for the city. This presentation is on the public hearing for Agenda Item Four A, the Planning Applications for the Proposed Life Sciences Campus, consisting of the Site Development Plan, Design Review Permit, Vesting Tentative Parcel Map, Height Exception, and Conditional Use Permit. My presentation will focus on the planning applications and Sequel Review, and will be followed by the applicant's presentation that will focus on the developer, project urban design, and architecture. The objective for this agenda item is to hold a public hearing to consider a site development plan, design review permit, vesting tentative parcel map, height exception, conditional use permit, and the associated project environmental, also referred to as the Sequel Determination for an approximately five hundred and seventy thousand square foot life sciences campus located at two thirty-one Millbrae Avenue, six twenty and thirty Rollins Road, and two oh one, two thirty, and two thirty-one Adrian Road. The project involves demolition of all existing structures and the construction of three separate life science buildings, an amenity building, and above-ground parking structure, and realignment of property lines. The proposed life sciences campus site is located in the eastern portion of the city within the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, also referred to as the MSASP. The project site, as you see here, is bordered by Millbrae Avenue to the north, Rollins Road to the east, the Old Portail Canal to the south, and the railroad tracks, Bart and Caltrain tracks to the west. The four point seven one acre site is currently developed with six single-story industrial buildings and associated surface parking that would be demolished as part of the project. The project proposes to develop approximately five hundred and seventy thousand square feet of new Class A office and lab space located within three six-story buildings. In addition, the project includes a two-story amenity building and a ten-tier parking structure. The project also includes a linear pedestrian paseo that runs north-south through the project site, providing access to each of the buildings, as well as a plaza that would function as a link to the adjacent gateway at Millbrae Station Project, currently under construction, as well as the Millbrae Intermodal Station. The proposed vesting tentative map would adjust property lines to accommodate the new buildings. As you can see on the site plan, Building One fronts Rollins Road and is approximately one hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet. Building Two fronts Adrian Road and is approximately one hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet. Building Three fronts Harriet Tubman Road and is approximately two hundred and thirty-four thousand square feet. The proposed amenity building is a two-story structure located at the corner of Millbrae and Rollins. There is an approximately three hundred and sixty thousand square foot parking structure accessible off Adrian Road. This project also includes a vesting tentative parcel map that will serve to merge the existing parcels, alter lot lines, and abandon and create easements. The map would also adjust a property line shared with the city. The MSASP guides future public improvements and private development in the plan area. Parcels one A and one B, with Buildings One, Three, and the amenity building, are located within the transit-oriented development planning zone. Parcel Two, with Building Two in the parking garage, is located within the Employment Center Light Industrial Zone. The proposed project is designed to further the ongoing transformation of the area surrounding Millbrae Station from its existing commercial and light industrial character into a vibrant mixed-use district. The proposed project would complement the nearby TOD projects consistent with the land use regulations and development standards established by the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan for these zones. The project is substantially in conformance with the MSASP development standards, with a height exception requested for building and utilization of the Community Benefits Program for increased FAR. Section ten point oh five point twenty-five thirty of the Millbrae Municipal Code provides the opportunity for an applicant to apply for a height exception, which would allow a deviation from the standard, providing the proposed increase in height would not be detrimental to adjacent properties and is compatible with the proposed project. The MSASP allows a maximum building height of ninety to a hundred feet in the TOD zone and a maximum height of eighty-five feet in the EC slash LI zone. The proposed project is also subject to height limits imposed by the Federal Aviation Administration in the San Francisco Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Buildings One and Three conform to the maximum heights. The Building Two would require a height exception to allow a maximum height of a hundred and one feet, pursuant to Millbrae Municipal Code Section ten point oh five point twenty-five thirty. The amended project resolution documents findings for approval as required by the municipal code. Finding that the additional height is not detrimental to any adjacent uses enhances architectural compatibility within the project and is consistent with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Staff has had extensive discussions with SFO and ALUC planning staff and confirm the heights fall below the maximums imposed by the FAA and the San Francisco Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. The MSASP seeks to accomplish broad community benefits through a community benefits program. Specifically, policy P dash IMP twelve was amended by the City Council in October twenty twenty-one to state that for all new development projects in which the developer elects and city agrees to utilize the Community Benefits Program, the parties shall enter into a development agreement or a community benefit agreement. And that specifies the types of community benefits. Additionally, the City Council amended the MSASP to accept community benefits funds to be paid into the city's Affordable Housing Fund. This community benefits payment is in addition to any required impact or in lieu fees. The applicant has elected, and the city staff is recommending that the city enter into a community benefits agreement as documented in Condition of Approval Number sixty-five. The community benefit obligation of the project is proposed to be satisfied through the payment of approximately one point four seven million to the Affordable Housing Fund or such fund that the city identifies consistent with the MSASP Community Benefits Program. Should the Planning Commission take action to approve this project, the Community Benefits Agreement would then be presented to the City Council for review and action at a future City Council meeting in early twenty twenty-two, as the City Council is the review and approval body for these agreements. The project provides a pedestrian paseo, plazas, sidewalks, new street trees, and a two-way cycle track along Adrian Road and Harriet Tubman Road to provide access for cyclists and pedestrians. The project proposes to include nine hundred and twenty-seven parking stalls and one hundred long-term bicycle parking spaces with the inclusion of a TDM program, which I will discuss in our next slide. The MSASP requires a comprehensive TDM plan that includes measure, measures to increase walking, biking, transit use, or ride sharing to reduce vehicle congestion, as well as for projects that wish to propose lower parking ratios. The TDM plan documents compliance with the required minimum twenty percent reduction in trip generation. The TDM plan includes many strategies, including bicycle parking showers and lockers, bicycle repair station, preferential parking for van pools and car pools, and flexible work schedule and telecommuting. Approximately thirty-three thousand square feet of new open space is provided across each product, across the project site. The MSASP requires ten percent of lot area for publicly available open space, and the project proposes fifteen point nine percent. Twenty-one trees would be removed, and seventy-six new trees will be planted. The project meets the city's water-efficient landscape ordinance with sustainability measures, native species, and drought-tolerant plants. The proposed project was analyzed in the MSASP EIR that was certified on Jan- January twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, at a programmatic level. Project Sequel Analysis, including a written checklist, was completed for this project. This analysis confirmed that the project was considered and evaluated within the MSASP EIR. Pursuant to Public Resources Code Section two one one six six in Sequel Guidelines Section one five one six eight, the proposed project would not have any new or substantially more severe significant environmental impacts than disclosed in the MSASP final EIR, including the addendum thereto, and no further environmental review is required. Additional VMT analysis was completed, and the proposed project meets all the screening criteria. The impact to VMT is less than significant. We received a supplemental technical memorandum from the applicant's environmental consultants, which further substantiates that the project's emergency electrical generators will not cause any significant environmental impacts. The supplemental technical memorandum confirms that all potential environmental impacts have been adequately disclosed in the Sequel Analysis. This analysis is posted on the city webpage for this meeting. Additionally, the generators would be required to comply with the city's noise regulations and other regulations by agencies. Final amendments were distributed today to the commission and posted on the city's website. This includes an amended resolution with clarifications to benefit the public, and additional text regarding the previously approved water supply assessment for the MSASP and amendments to the MSASP to conditionally permit biosafety level-two uses. An errata to the Sequel Analysis was also distributed that provides minor technical clarifications, but does not change any of the underlying conclusions of the Sequel Analysis. The staff recommendation for tonight at this public hearing is to adopt the amended resolution approving a site development plan, design review permit, vesting tentative parcel map, height exception, and conditional use permit, making findings, approving a Sequel Analysis, and adopting an MMRP and Statement of Overwriting Considerations to allow a life sciences campus, which includes three lab and office buildings, an amenity building, and a parking structure on a four point seven one acre site located at two thirty-one Millbrae Avenue, six twenty and thirty Rollins Road, and two oh one, two thirty, and two thirty-one Adrian Road. Staff will bring this slide up later in the meeting if the commission makes a motion tonight, so you can read this amended language into the record.
Thank you.
Now hand this off. Now I'll hand this off to the applicant team to provide you with some additional information about the project. Staff, including the city attorney's representative, Ellis Raskin, and the city's Sequel and transportation and parking consultants are available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'm thinking that maybe we can, before we take any, do any questions of staff, maybe we can just go ahead and have the applicant come and do their presentation, if that's okay with the other commissioners, because some of the questions may be answered by the applicants, if they have anything to add to that. That be okay? Okay, so does the applicant have a presentation, or do they, did they want to add anything? Let's go ahead and proceed with that first.
We do have a presentation. Let me share the screen. Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
We can't see the screen. I think Ms. Jordan's audio is a little bit quiet, so if you can maybe increase your volume and speak louder, if you're giving the presentation.
Yeah, can you hear me better now?
A little, it's still a little quiet, so.
Okay. How about now?
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening. I'm Toon Jordan with Alexandria Real Estate Equities. Before we start the project, I'd just like to say thank you very much for having us this evening. We're very excited to share our project with you tonight. We're the developer and applicant for the ACLS Millbrae Project. And with me tonight are, is the WRNS team, and they'll introduce themselves as we start the presentation. A little bit about Alexandria. We are a life science real estate developer, which means most of our buildings are built to be biotech and lab buildings. We're a national company with properties in major areas such as San Francisco Bay Area, Greater Boston, Seattle, Maryland, and San Diego. We strive to provide best-in-class workplace and amenities to our tenants to help them retain the best talent in the industry. You are probably familiar with some of our tenants, such as Genentech, Pfizer, Verily, Merck, and Moderna. We have success in partnering with different municipalities to help enhance life science community in different areas in the Bay, such as Mission Bay, South San Francisco, and San Carlos. And we are looking forward to doing the same in Millbrae. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to our project team, Russ and Raul, if you guys want to introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. My name is Russ Sherman. I'm the partner in charge of the project with WRNS Studio.
I am Raoul Garduño, partner at WRNS Studio as well. Very nice to be here with you all.
So the project that we're bringing before you tonight, as Susie has mentioned, we have a brief, sorry, three buildings, six-story each, and they're all life science office buildings, totaling around five hundred and seventy thousand square feet. That's the planning square feet. Each building is twenty-five to forty, forty thousand foot floor plate with excellent window lines and views, and a lot of good daylight getting into the floor plate. And we love this location because of the prominent location to both one oh one and two eighty, and also great access to Millbrae Caltrain and Bart Station. And we think that's really going to help our life science community get their people to and from work without having to drive too much. We are planning for doing legal certification and fit well certification, which is pretty standard for our buildings, and providing a significant number of EV charging stations. This campus will be fully amenitized with conferencing center, food service, and fitness center for our tenants. Some of those amenities can also be provided to the public as well. And we are hoping to start construction, hopefully, early next year with your approval tonight, so that we can have our first occupancy towards the end of two thousand and twenty-four. With that, I'll turn it over to our WRNS design team to walk you through the design of the campus and the buildings.
Thank you, Toon. I'm going to just lead you through how we approached this project from the beginning. WRNS as a firm is concerned a lot with how we create the, what we call the urban realm. And so when we approached this project, it was not just about designing the lab campus, but also how that lab campus tied into the greater MSASP. Toward that end, what you're seeing here is our buildings are oriented in the north-south direction. This does, this does two things. One, it allows for daylight to get into the paseo during, you know, midday hours. The second was, is that by orienting Building Three, which is the one that runs along Harriet Tubman, we're blocking the predominant winds from coming into the paseo, and we are creating a very usable space. The project is anchored at the corner of Millbrae and Rollins with a low-scale building that forms a gateway piece and an urban plaza that allows pedestrians to cross safely and to take part in the, in the Gateway Project and the shopping, et cetera, that's being provided there. So what we're trying to do is take the, the ACLS Millbrae Project, the lab project, and tie it into the greater project, the greater Gateway Project, and create a real urban development and a real node here around the transit center. Next. So what you see here is a diagram that shows our connections. And what I wanted to kind of talk about here, just very briefly, is the kind of orange line is the link over to the Gateway Project. But running in the opposite direction, Buildings One and Three have what we call blow-through lobbies that connect visually Rollins Road through the paseo over to Harriet Tubman. And you'll see that in some, in some floor plans. So what we're doing is creating a pedestrian access that connects, but also a visual link across the project. And that visual link may have to do also with the project that's going on in the adjacent. Susie has already taken us through the, the existing conditions. There are, these are existing one-story concrete tilt-up buildings. All of these buildings would be taken over, taken down as a part of the project. And then just some views from Millbrae Avenue and Rollins. And again, so here's the site plan, showing the lower-scale amenity building anchoring the corner of Rollins and Millbrae, the paseo running in the north-south direction with a link over the Gateway Project. The parking structure, as you can see, has been located to the, over to where the railroad tracks are. It's the kind of least usable portion of the site and is topped by a PV array, you know, to provide solar power. We've built a full-scale model. We do a lot of studying in the, in the studio of, in three D by building models. And we just thought you'd like to see a few images of the models, of the models that were constructed. We can just jump through these. I'm going to turn this over to Raoul, who is our lead designer on the project, and he'll take you through what we're, how we're meeting the MSASP from a design standpoint.
Thanks, Russ. So first thing, this is kind of a vignette, I would say. We use these tools to kind of have some visual simulation of reality, adding materiality to our project so that we can understand how the buildings look. So this first image, I think, explains pretty well the majority of the, of the project. The building on the left side, it's Building One, just as a reference. And you can see there's three main components in the whole project for these buildings. The upper mass of that building, Building One, is a taut glass facade, mostly vision glass with some accents of translucent color panels. And we will see a little bit more of that in the, in the following images. There's also a lower wall that we call the street wall that has these deep and more dense rhythm of vertical panels, vertical fence that gives more sense of scales towards the pedestrians. And both masses are sitting on a more solid stone base that has punched windows. So visuals are more controlled at grade. On the, on the right side of this image, you will see the amenities building, lower scale, you know, fronting the, the Gateway Plaza. And peeking behind of it, there's Building Three with what we call the paseo wall, that it's a special wall that has a, a more texture and more articulation, and we will see more images of, of those walls. But let me just quickly pause and talk about these different walls. This is the, the street wall, the lower-scale one, again, with a rhythm of vertical fence, scaling down the length of the facade. The cell wall that is running along the paseo has a little bit more saturation. It has a texture. It has these undulating panels, much more rich and invested pattern throughout the, the wall. And then the city wall is the simplest of all, the upper mass. And you'll see there's a play of patterned vertical strips of semi-opaque glass panels. So this is the, the entry plaza at the intersection of Millbrae and Rollins. You can see of the, of the foreground, there's going to be a terrace of planters and seating walls that are helping mediate the scale of street towards the amenity building, which is the lower mass. And then farther back is Building One, and to the right will be Building Three. Now, if I walk along Rollins on this side and cross Adrian, this is what I will find. This is looking back at where I was before. Again, street wall sitting on the stone, on the stone base, and setback is the upper mass of the city wall. Now I'm going to cross the street again and make a left. And this is what I will. And this is what I will see. This is Building Two. I'm along, looking down on Adrian. I can see now the cell wall that is part of the Paseo wall that is, again, more rich in terms of color and pattern, is flagged by the, by the street wall on both sides. Farther, farther along the road is the parking structure. So I'm going to continue walking along Adrian. And now I'm looking at Building Two. Building Two, the lobby that is a little bit elevated, is a glassy lobby bookended by solid stone walls. These would be the terminus, the south terminus of the Paseo. Again, getting a closer look at kind of the materials, the materiality, the patterns, kind of the glass and metal envelope of the buildings. Now I'm going to turn my head a hundred and eighty degrees and go into the Paseo. Here I am kind of in the middle of the Paseo, right in the heart of the space. You can see some of the language of the angled walls are mimicking on the paving, on the angled benches, in angled planters, just to give overall a cohesive design language throughout the Paseo. Landscape is broken into low and medium scale. And I'm going to go now down at grade. And now I am, I'm outside of the blow-through lobby of Building One. Right ahead of me, I can see the cafeteria. There's a series of stairs going up to a terrace of Building Three. I can make a right and cross the bridge to get to the amenities. All of this, I think, kind of explains the, the main character of the Paseo, which is a little bit more special and tried to be a little bit more invested, a journey through the Paseo that is slightly different from the outside envelope of the other buildings. And now I'm gonna turn it back to Tune again.
Thank you, Raul. So as I was mentioning, we're planning on providing a fully amenitized campus, which means there will be a state-of-the-art conferencing center, which is the amenity building in the corner. There would be a mixture of large conference room, auditorium-style conference rooms, and some roof garden that is, that is, will be serving as part of the conferencing center. Each building will have bike storage, indoor bike storage, and shower facility, so that people who ride their bike to work can shower before they go to work. And that will hopefully make more people ride their bikes to work. We'll be providing a quality cafe with healthy food options. We do anticipate our building tenants to go across the street and explore the Republic Urban Project and visit their retail there or go down to downtown Millbrae and visit the restaurants down there. We actually are undersizing our food service a little bit for that purpose. Again, this is for convenience, and we, we do, we will be encouraging our tenants to visit the local business downtown. And lastly, we'll provide a fitness center in the building. Again, for convenience, it's part of the campus amenities that I think the leading life science companies do expect, so that their employees can stay healthy. Next slide, please. It's not moving.
Oh, there might be a lag.
That's okay. Got it. It's here. Okay. And last slide is, this is the project timeline. We formally submitted our entitlement application in the spring of 2021, and hopefully we'll receive your approval tonight, and we'll be able to move forward with the demolition that we're planning for in early next year. The building core and shell completion, the first one, is anticipated to be in the last quarter of 2023, followed by Building Two and Garage, and then the last building core and shell completion is in the second quarter of 2024. And that concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And before we continue, we forgot to introduce the person, the person who gave our presentation. So I wanted to welcome, so if, last go, I guess, Mr. Mata, if you can do the introduction for us, please. That would be great.
Yes, hi. Ross Kamata, Planning Manager with City of Millbrae Community Development Department. I'd like to present Susie Panetta, who assisted us with processing this application and is the project planner for this project. If you have any questions, I'm available. Susie's available, and also Community Development Director Smith is available to answer questions. We also have the secret consultants and traffic consultants. Should there be any questions related to those topics?
Thank you very much. And just a good, big welcome to Ms. Panetta to joining us. And you're starting off with a great project or a big project. So thank you. So welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can go ahead with questions, or should we, would we like to hear from the, should we open up for public forum for the public before we start into questions? What's the will of the Commissioners? Commissioner Quig.
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention, and I don't know if this does it or probably should have done right at the very, very beginning, that I had had a conversation with a representative from Alexandria. I'd probably say at least a year and a half ago, quite honestly, I can't really remember what it was. It was just a very small overview of the whole project and kind of waiting when it was going to really come together. So it is here, but I just wanted to disclose that right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the other Commissioners want to do the same? Do you have any?
I will, just so that it's public knowledge, it's been cleared already, but the company I work for does lease space in Alexandria as well as Bautic. I did get that first.
Okay, so that's been cleared with our legal counsel. Commissioner Wong, did you want to comment on, sorry, you're muting. Anybody else? Commissioner Davis? We're all good. Okay, so from here, would we like to go ahead to open to the public first, or would you like to start with Commissioner? Questions?
I'd like to go to the public first.
Yeah.
Okay, on these bigger projects, I think we tend to, Commissioner Quig, do you?
Yeah, I, I might have some questions, but I'd like to see what everyone else has to say.
Yep. I mean, definitely we'll have time for Commissioner questions. I just wanted to see if on these bigger projects, sometimes we like to listen to the public. So do we have any, do we have any members of the public with any comments before we begin?
Yes, we have a couple hands. I will start with James Ruiz Gomez. If you will come off mute, and I will start the timer.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ruiz Gomez.
Hi, good evening, Chair Commissioner and Honorable Commissioner, Commissioners. Hard-working city staff and presenters, excellent presentation. My name's James Ruiz Gomez. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the San Mateo County Building and Construction Trade Council. San Mateo County Building and Construction Trade Council is comprised of 25 unions and 16,000 highly skilled men and women, many of which live in Millbrae. I would like to compliment the presenters and the architects and developer on a outstanding project. Looks great. And would like to ask for community benefits in the terms of a community workforce agreement. Community workforce agreement ensures that local contractors are hired, local workers are hired, local apprentices are hired, returning veterans through a Helms to Hard Hat program, and individuals that have graduated from apprenticeship readiness class. Millbrae of Gateway is being built, utilize, is being, is utilizing and building their facility under one of these agreements. And a developer like Urban Republic can do this. A larger developer like Alexandria can do it. I think that project has set precedence from past practice with Millbrae. We hope that this project could also be done under a project labor agreement. Project labor agreements follow a working family platform that'll ensure that construction workers that come to town will not receive poverty wages and that they will not be coming from other towns and utilizing our construction dollars and sending it to other counties or other states. The working family platform is earn a decent wage. Even though our members earn a decent wage, half of our income goes to rents and mortgages, healthcare, not only healthcare for the worker, but healthcare for their families with optical and, with vision and dental coverage. Retirement, ensuring that these workers have a retirement, that retirement dollars are invested into the stock market. They come back to our community in different real estate projects as well as bond projects. So it's a way to recycle the money. Finally, funding our own education. We fund one of the largest privately funded education systems in these United States, ensuring that these buildings will be built the right time, on time, and on budget. When people ask me what a union is, I say to them, it's simple. It's working families standing together. We're asking the City of Millbrae to stand with those working families. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have any others?
Yes, S. Beal. I'll go ahead and, he'll come off mute.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I won't get too deep in the woods here. I just want to echo what Mr. Ruiz Gomez said. I represent the plumbers and pipe fitters of San Mateo County and look forward to Alexandria working with us on this project. It's a great project, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any others?
There are no other hands quite yet. If you'd wish to speak, please raise hand.
Okay, well, so we'll, I guess, I'll assume that we don't have any others for now. So we will go ahead and open up for questions from the planning Commissioners. So hold on, let me get your, my view, so I can see you all.
Oh, I can subsume.
Can you take off the speech, please?
Sure.
I'm thinking maybe not to close the public hearing yet. I know it's a little, if we can, if we can hold off in case we have other questions, or should we go ahead and close the public comment section?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Quig.
Yeah, in the staff report, by the way, it was presented, wonderful presentation, but it talks about the photovoltaic, which I guess is the shade things, and how much electricity do you think that will produce? How, all the, did I make myself understood? No.
The solar panels? You want to know how much they produce?
Yeah, I had just never really seen it like that. I've always thought of it as a solar panel. But how much electricity do they expect to get from something like that? And is it just for your project, or do you think it's going to help other places also?
One of the applicant teams answered, or do you have?
I'm not really sure.
Sure. Yes, I can take that. I can answer that. So I don't have the number of how much electricity will be produced off the top of my head, but I can follow up on that question. It will produce enough for our building, and it's not to, we're not producing it for others' usage or public usage. And we're trying to offset the use that will, instead of relying on PG&E grid so much, this will offset that need.
Thank you.
So do we have any questions, other questions, staff? Commissioner Davis.
Hi, everybody. First, I just want to say that this presentation and this project has been a ton of work by the staff and the applicants. And you've brought forth something that's really well laid out, well thought out, and I want to thank you for that. Just that they're, they're not, they're broad questions. Even though we don't have a lot of people in the public raising their hand and asking questions, I think it's important to put a few more details out there. They're all in the gigantic packet somewhere. But if you could just speak, there are things that often come up when the public asks questions. They ask questions about parking. They ask questions about traffic. They, like the two speakers that did mention, they do ask questions about what is the labor force. And you mentioned, you know, environmental features, you know, LEED certified and all. But could you highlight a few of the environmental features? You know, is there, you know, the water runoff or EV parking or, you know, the landscaping, how that's going to work? Can you just, can you go into the project just a little bit more in those kinds of areas?
Tune, did you want to take that, or should you want us to?
Um, I can take that. I'm just thinking where I should start. It's such a broad, it's a big list of what we do. Well, first of all, let's start with the water usage, all the landscaping on site. It's low water usage. A lot of it is drought tolerant, and it's handpicked to be suitable to the climate of the city of Millbrae and, or, you know, Millbrae South City, this kind of area. As you know, different areas in the Bay Area, we all have little different microclimates. So it will be a water-efficient landscape. And then in terms of water conservation and putting it back, we'll comply with the C3 requirement, which is bio-retention. So rainwater gets naturally treated before it gets back into the storm drain system. So that is in compliance with the city requirement and the building codes. In terms of the photovoltaic panels, right now the plan is to provide PV panels over the garage. And we're looking into putting more on the other buildings. But we got to get through the FAA height limit studies, and we'll put on as much as we can. And that is to offset the usage that we'll be relying on from PG&E. And what else was on your list? Sorry, that was a long list.
Parking and traffic, I think.
Yeah, and labor.
Parking. Oh, yeah. And then one thing that we didn't mention in our presentation is that our buildings are all electric buildings. So what that means is that they're higher efficiency in the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing equipment that we use. And we won't be using any natural gas to heat or cool our buildings. So that, that's the part of being environmentally friendly that we're trying to strive for. Parking, I think, I need a little help on the parking ratio on this building.
I can, I can take that question. With regards to the parking, the, the project poses 927 parking stalls for the project. And the, the, there is a minimum parking requirement that the plan specifies without any TDM measures, but this project is providing TDM measures. And those TDM measures are designed to reduce vehicle trips to and from the site. And with the reduction, the city agreed that a lower vehicle, vehicle parking requirement would be satisfactory, given the proximity to the train station, and, which is why we had agreed to a lower parking count for the project.
The public probably doesn't know TDM. Can you?
Sure. Transportation Demand Management, which are, for example, transit passes, ride share. So basically, measures that would promote alternative modes of transportation opposed to vehicle, single occupancy vehicle.
So the other question I think Commissioner Davis brought up was circulation. So if you can go-
So if you can go maybe a little bit into that as well. I know there was that site plan, so.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
Traffic, traffic circuit.
The, the mobile station area specific plan, when it was prepared, there was a program EIR that was repaired when, um, when the plan was being put together. So the EIR, the program EIR for the MSASP.
Environmental impact report, EIR.
Environmental impact report, thank you. For the project evaluated a maximum build outs. As long as future projects are within the maximum build out of the MSASP, those impacts would have been evaluated under the EIR, environmental impact report for the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, did you have other questions?
No, I think that's better now. Thanks.
Thank you. Other commissioners, Commissioner Wong.
Oh, Catherine, would you like to go first?
That's fine.
Sorry, I didn't see.
Okay, just wanted to make sure there's no follow up. So with that overview, get a little, little bit more into specifics. You know, again, things we're interested in is architecture, landscape, safety, parking, and circulation, aesthetics. What I want to start though with is a little bit understanding about how this facility is managed and how it operates. Because if Alexandria is a property management company trying to attract bioscience, biotechnology companies, how do we envision the facility to be managed in terms of security? A lot of the description here has it that it's open for public and that they can walk through the passo around the facility. So it doesn't appear like it's gonna be gated or have restricted access. Can you tell me about, uh, will there be like onsite security? Will there be, uh, security cameras that are managed by Alexandria? Do they manage the property? Will they always be on site? Will there be like a security in the lobby, someone always on site there managing the tenants? What's provided in terms of how this is managed and who, who manages the facility?
Sure. Um, so every one of our property is, we have a very, very enhanced security system. And that's not just on the inside of the building, on the exterior as well. We pride ourselves in operation excellence. We own and operate our buildings. So we, we do care about security and how safe our campus is. This campus and actually all the campuses have exterior cameras. So when we start designing the projects, we try to avoid certain areas that could be potential security risks, right? But eventually, all of the exterior will be covered by a security camera. And we'll have a security staff at each building lobby. And most of the campuses do have security patrol throughout the day and twenty-four seven. So it's a very secure campus with twenty-four seven security system or personnel.
Okay, and then following on the function of the facility, again, it's attracting biotech companies. But the property here is very limited in terms of space. You know, it's pretty urban. There's people living across the street. You know, when I think of a biotech facility, I think of like a hospital or laboratories, something with chemicals, chemical storage. So I don't see here in this facility, can you touch upon some of the architectural features that are designed to make this a biotech campus rather than, why don't we just make it a high-tech campus? Or will there be slash availability for high-tech slash biotech? Or other special features to address these issues about chemical and lab safety and, and chemical storage?
Yes, so typically in a biotech building, what's important is the exhaust system, right? You want to make sure that you ventilate the chemicals. But more importantly, that there is limits in chemical quantity that the operation plan follows the building permit, which is very strict about how much chemical can go in what type of space. So that happens early on in terms of, from the corn shell building, which is what we're doing. We're building the shell of the building and we're planning the building to be a certain type. But when each tenant comes in, they can apply for a different permit that allows them a different chemical quantity. But the, the key is to make sure that there is control and proper safety plan in place to monitor the chemical quantity that is being used in the building. And there will be proper chemical storage room. And that is also limited by size and quantity in the building code as well.
And then going along with that function, typically if I think about a facility like that, I would think that there'd be a big unloading area, a big shipping receiving area. I don't see that in the plans here that there's a good, can you talk about it? A good plan for, even if they're unloading chemicals or unloading materials and there's all these different companies occupying the property. And is that a central receiving area? It's not just gonna go through the front door, the front desk, right?
Correct. So each building actually has a loading dock that is off of Adrian. And that loading dock is highly secured. It's got a roll down gate with card readers and cameras. And those features probably don't show up in the planning sets. But yes, we do have a loading dock and a chemical storage area that's planned for close by proximity to the loading area.
I just wanted to hit some of those questions first to talk about the function and make sure you understand what the function is so that we can think about some of the features needed for design and architecture of the building. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I think what's different about this campus is that it's so well designed that you can't tell where the loading docks are and the service yards, right? Unlike some other campuses where if we might have a little bit more room or more open, more outdoor space, you would see a service yard that looks like a service yard. And you would see a loading dock that looks like a loading dock. But to be honest, it's such a good job that it's really hard to tell where the service yard and a loading dock are. But they are all there and properly sized. Thank you.
You know, touch on that last issue, issue I raised about being a combined life sciences slash or high-tech facility. Will it be open to any high-tech company? Or is there a waiting list for biotech companies waiting to occupy the space? Or will you attract just any other businesses, other businesses can occupy the space too?
Um, we usually target, uh, life science and biotech companies. And I think the building functions and usage aren't quite the same between, between the high-tech industry and biotech. So if you're in, if you're in high-tech, you probably wouldn't be looking for space in a biotech space. But, um, there is a shortage of biotech space out there right now. And that's why we are very excited to build this building. Thank you. Are you done? Did you have more questions, Commissioner Wong? Thank you. Commissioner Quick, I, I think I missed you earlier and then I'll go to Commissioner Wong.
I, I did have a couple of questions and they did get answered. Once again, now I noticed in the staff report that, um, you know, the applicant proposed an increase in the baseline floor area ratio. And because of that, there's going to be, you know, community benefits. And it's a nice sum of money there for increasing the FAR. And it goes into city's affordable housing fund. Is that right? How is that fund coming along?
RC Smith, Community Home Director, I'll answer that question. Thanks for having me here tonight. So you might recall that you saw the state of the art city's inclusionary ordinance and the commercial linkage impact fee ordinance and fees in May. And happy to say they proceeded to council and were adopted in July and then went into effect in August and September. And note, we have not collected any payments into that fund yet. So the balance is zero, which is why we thought that might be a nice proposal for this project to pay community benefits into. The city, through the development agreement with the Republic Urban Project, did pay out two point eight eight million dollars from our previous affordable housing fund. And that depleted it quite a bit. That funded, partially funded the eight units under construction at the core affordable housing project that's veterans preferred. And so right now in our new fund, we have a fund balance of zero, which is why we thought this would be a good opportunity. But I'll remind you that the condition of approval that's before you tonight states that the community benefit obligation would be satisfied through the payment to the affordable housing fund or other such fund that the city council identifies consistent with the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan Community Benefits Program. So if you look at that specific plan, chapter ten, it does give some other options there. So what we plan to do is take this community benefits agreement to the city council in early twenty twenty-two as the city council is their review and approval body for those agreements. And then we can report back to you on what they ultimately approve at, at the subsequent meeting after the city council takes action.
Can I ask one more question, please? Okay, so, um, in tonight's public hearing, we're also going to be granting a height exception and a conditional use permit. And the height, height exception is a little bit higher, but not a tremendous amount of height difference the way I understand. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'll take that too. Why not? So we weren't, I was heavily involved in that examination. And so, yes, there's only a tiny sliver of the building. And I will say, we measure height in kind of a unique way where we can take like the maximum building height. But if you go all the way around the building, especially on a building site like this where the grade changes as it slopes, the highest point of the building is what we measure. But if we measured average or we measured average grade, it would be lower. But the maximum height is just a little bit above the maximum height in the Employment Center Light Industrial Zone, which is eighty-five feet. And I'll, I'll remind you, that's a, that's lower than the TOD zone. The TOD zone, you can go up to a hundred feet in this location that the project site is. In other areas of the MSASP, you can actually go even higher. And for a large part, those heights in the MSASP were structured around the FAA and SFO, a Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Maximum Heights. And we thought we had a pretty set height limit here. But as Mr. Moda said, we've been working really closely with the SFO staff on this. And the applicant has also been working with the SFO staff and that FAA. And we've been working with the Airport Land Use Commission staff. So a lot of inter-agency coordination here. And for that reason, the, the building heights, which were thoroughly analyzed, were able to pop up a little bit above the maximum height in that Employment Center Light Industrial Zone. But what that accomplishes really is a consistent height. If you saw with that model, a consistent height throughout the entire campus, which is why staff recommends approval of the height exception. And we believe the municipal code findings can be made that the additional height is not detrimental to any adjacent uses because the adjacent uses are largely at that height and enhances architectural compatibility within the project. Because again, the heights are, are consistent. And we've again confirmed it's consistent with other governing plans, agencies.
Okay, and I, I think we kind of discussed this earlier today that basically when you come off of the freeway one oh one and you're coming down that street, it's gonna be pretty close comparable to urban project, right?
Yeah, I don't know if the project architect could bring up the rendering that shows the gateway project. But I think that's a nice view that shows you, again, you're, you're sitting a little bit up high with that view, but it shows you the viewpoint relative to the gateway project. And the gateway project is a little bit closer to SFO, so they had a little bit higher or lower heights. Yeah, if you look at this, you can see from that angle, the heights relative to the gateway project.
Yeah. They're pretty square, the buildings. Yeah. I think it's a nice project. I think it would be a nice enhancement to Millbrae.
Thank you. I'm gonna actually go to Commissioner Del Negro since, first, since he hasn't, oh, sorry. Commissioner Quaid, are you finished though?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
I was wanting to see the comparison and that's a great slide for that. No, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Del Negro.
I'm gonna dig into a little bit of the general design before I get into some of the biology specific or the research lab specific questions that I might have as a biologist who does research. I'll have some very specific questions for you. But starting with the building itself, um, you know, a little clarity on the cafe. Is that a public cafe or that's an employee only cafe or a site only cafe?
It's a public cafe, yeah.
Um, and which building are the, is the exercise facilities in? That wasn't clear to me on the design.
Same, uh, building three, same building as the cafe.
Um, and then let's see here. The terrace direction seemed a little odd to me. Which way were the prevailing winds on the building? And there's a lot of north and western. I, I assumed that the wind, prevailing winds were coming from the north and the west.
Russ can probably speak to this better.
Prevailing winds are coming from the west, Commissioner. And as you can see, um, from the, from the rendering here, our, uh, our terraces are actually on the east side of the, of the building. So you can see there's a long terrace along building one, uh, along building three, excuse me. And that's actually sheltered from the winds by the massing. Same thing on building two, where there's a terrace that looks down the passo. And so you can see it's actually sheltered from the winds from, that are coming from the west side.
And so building one is protected by building three, which is nice.
That's right.
Good, all right, that helps. Is this a, so I worked in a building, helped design a building for a biology lab. And it was a beam structure. There's a lot of flexibility in the structure. Buildings are vibrating up and down a lot. Have you guys already addressed that issue on six-story building lab equipment up high and set problems? Are you focusing with the lab equipment down low or are there different interior, interior design as far as structure for that?
So we focus on making sure that our building meets the vibration criteria. That is standard to the lab industry. Some developers don't do it as much, but we do. We make sure that the structure of the building is enhanced so that the vibration doesn't carry when you're, you know, in the middle of the floor plate and you're far away from the beam. And we build it that way throughout the building for flexibility. So that if there is a lab with sensitive equipment, it can go anywhere in the building.
I'm glad to hear that. I've seen buildings turned down for, for potential leases just from the flexibility issue. See, and let's get into the bicycle facilities here. I was really commended you obviously on the bike rooms. That's a fantastic amenity, a hundred spaces. They're split between each building. I'm very impressed with that. I also read about the two-way cycle track on Adrian. Can you explain what the two-way cycle track is?
Sure, um, Ross, could you have the plan or the site plan?
Uh, we could pull up, uh.
Maybe WRNS should have one. Maybe that new site plan. You could drag your cursor to show the route. On the rendering, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, so this, this one should work. So the two-way cycle track is on the right-hand side of Adrian. So on the building two side of the street and the garage. So what that means is you have bicycle going. So what that means is you have bicycle going both directions in one designated, not one lane, but in the bicycle lane. And no bicycle on the other side of the street. Because building one, building three have their loading docks right there. So we thought that it would be safer for the cyclist to be on the side. That they don't have to dodge the truck, delivery trucks coming in and out.
I guess one of the questions I have then is that Harriet Tubman is a one-way street. Is there plans to have that be two-way for bicyclists? As a back route to the TOD? Does anyone remember in the MSASP? I see Darcy's.
Yes. So. May- maybe we should bring up the civil plan if you could bring it, get it handy.
And that's a great, good idea. If you have the two-way cycle track on that side and it's leading to a two-way.
Yeah. There, so as part of the project, there will be a new two-way cycle track installed on Harriet Tubman. Tying in. I can do my best with that.
Wonderful.
Yeah, tying in with the BART Gateway project that has. A cycle track that would kind of dead end under the overpass. Yeah, and and we spent a lot of time working with. The applicant team, the city public works team who's represented tonight by our TOD project manager, Harry Burrows. And the city's transportation, parking and circulation consultant, Fair and Peers, represented by Mike Hawkins, who actually worked on the original MSASP and the vision for that. But and and we also talked to the city of Burlingame, who is working on a specific plan. And have great consultants working with them to try to tie in a link, if you will, down Rawlins to connect out to the. To Broadway, out to the Bay Trail. Yeah, so as part of the project. Harriet Tubman Way will be dramatically improved and you can see on the. Upper hand there, yeah, if you can drag that cursor, this new cycle track there, which would then transition. To. Adrian Road and then ultimately, again, we're in talks with Burlingame Avenue. Who's looking at a dramatic renovation to Rawlins Road. To improve facilities there and we built in some flexibility here. Over the the project life, we we think the most appropriate place is on that south side, but ultimately. What the best traffic engineers and bicycle facility designers have told us is just keep, keep it flexible because it may need to move over time and we have the width there, but we think with. Improvements on Harriet Tubman right there, it'll really improve access to. The intermodal station for anyone coming in that way who wants to avoid Millbrae Avenue and Rawlins Road. And come in that way. Especially, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Burlingame has a lot of growth planned. In their specific planner on Rawlins Road, they have some housing under construction. They anticipate. In the near term, adding a couple hundred units, but over the build out of that specific plan, a lot more housing there, which would be. In a real positive contribution of biking and walking modes to this thinner metal station. So we were very cognizant of working with them.
Absolutely. I love what I'm seeing here. It's fantastic to see, you know, this type of element go into it. Did we consider the loading dock on the STEM company, the other biotech company that's on that corner of Rawlins Road? They have a loading dock that faces that cycle track. Was that taken? It's doesn't look like it's all that big of one, but there it does look like in the maps that they have a loading dock.
Yeah, and one note there that there's a new, that property was just leased with a new company moving in. He'll be submitted for a tenant improvement. And I can make a note to look at those plans to see if they're gonna keep that loading dock. I think. The new tenant, my anticipation is they might have a little, there was an office tenant primarily, so they may use that loading dock a lot less. But again, at least on initial construction, we thought landing it on this side of the street would be good, but again, it's plastic. And. And marking, so if we need to move it, we remain open to kind of seeing how it works out, talking to bicyclists, getting feedback.
I I feel great right now as a bicyclist. It's a, you know, very positive looking design to me. The external racks, are they located in the Paseo or the out near the street? There's always a security issue on bicycle racks. Where have you located them? The external ones.
I think there's a mixture. Maybe we can bring up, maybe. The project architect could just bring up the site plan that might show, as you can tell, they're in it. This is great to see them there and kind of like their lab, their lab space, the conference room, so they can. Can find these things a lot faster than we can. I'll tell you from the city's perspective, we did something a little bit different here where we we did want a specific rack, a really nice stainless steel horseshoe rack. And there's a few of those in the publicly accessible spaces and then they can maybe talk a little bit more about what's inside the building.
Let's start with the inside of the building, you know, bike room's pretty good. I mean, it's a 35 units, but they also mentioned some of the. External facilities will be available for more public access when they visit, I guess. It's more about the location, I think, and the style for me right now.
You can see them right there. Some are right outside the the door on building three on both sides and then some outside. They're usually close by the door, the lobby door.
So the external facing ports right there on the inside of the sale.
Yes, there's some right there.
Usually outside lobby doors instead of outside back doors. Right?
I think there's some along Rawlins too. Can you go, can you pan up a little bit?
That's right along between the trees there, the dashed lines between the trees.
Yeah, so those are in the city. Right away near that.
Oh, yeah, that that public of a street's a little bit less of a concern. I'd be more concerned about Harriet Tubman, so then kind of the backside of the building having some.
Yeah, and these are through lobbies or they're they're planned to be through lobby, so when you, if you do. Get your bike on BART and get off, you can ride to building three, walk through the lobby, go out through the other side and park your bike. Where it's a little bit more inward facing and.
And I also saw you had a bike room facing towards Harriet Tubman, which is nice as well in that building. Let's see here, and the last question I had about more more at the buildings themselves was about the entrance and egress from the parking structure. I understood and it sounded like there were two egresses that were on Adrian. But from the image, I can only see one, which was kind of. More towards the eastern side of the parking structure. Where's the? So I saw one kind of at the northeast corner, kind of up into the left where your cursor is. I was just, okay, there's that one right there.
So there's only one, yeah, one point of entry and we have a speed ramp in the middle of the parking garage.
That always worries me. There's there's not a second egress in case of emergency. Something blocks that exit or entrance, you know, most parking structures have two in, two egresses are parked, at least the ones I've parked in. For that, I guess, risk of emergency type of evacuation out of a facility. So there's only one going that direction, nothing on the backside?
Nothing on the backside.
No, nothing on the backside.
That concerns me a little bit and and now a lot of parking structure also gated. Is there an electric gate on the facility as well for after hours?
Yes, there are a security screen and gate and yeah, like the roll down gate. That completely, it's gonna be fully closed after hour.
Had that oyster point, it made a lot of people feel a lot safer. That's nice. All right, well, that's it for the facilities. I'll come back to the biology questions after some other people have some chance to to speak. Ask some questions.
Hey, let's talk a little bit about the. Green features of the facility. I noticed that the groundwater. Table's pretty high. And that would expect there to be some need for. Pumping to remove underground water. Is it possible? Can you speak on any features for possible onsite recapture of water reuse? And then also with our wastewater facility for City of Millbrae, it's very close proximity just across the freeway. Has there been discussions about purple pipe and having gold plum facilities and recycled water?
Russ, do you want to take the first part of the question?
I'm sorry, I never know if it's me or if it's you or I too. So. Where to go? I'm sorry, can you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong, would you repeat that question?
Yeah, that can mention about green facilities onsite, recapture of groundwater and or purple pipe from the wastewater facility across the freeway.
I would, I would have to get back to you on that, Commissioner Wong, if that's okay. I I don't believe we're recapturing any any groundwater in the project right now, and I think Tune can speak to the purple pipe or I can also.
Yeah, I don't think we're capturing, we're not collecting and treating. What we do is we put it in a bio retention and let it out. This typical of a a commercial site.
Right, the waste plan, the wastewater plan in Millbrae, which is right across the freeway is to have recycling facility there. So if we get to have future gold plumbing for future recycled water. You can talk with.
Darcy wanted to speak on that.
I'll I'll answer that. There is a condition of approval that requires installation of a recycled water line. In the streets, however, I will say this project in discussions with them, they don't have a huge demand for it. And the city, I don't have an exact timeline for you yet on the construction of. The city facility to then supply that water, but. It was envisioned in the MSASP and we have a condition of approval that requires that. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say there is quite a bit of utility work that the developer will be doing. To improve things that are very important, including right now, like storm drains. New water lines, a looping system to ensure adequate fire flow. And our favorite right now sewer lines. And so there's a, there's a significant sewer line. Upgrade proposed. Basically, the entire existing 10-inch sewer line in Adrian Road would be replaced with an 18-inch sewer line from just east of the BART tracks. All the way down Adrian, crossing over the center line. And connecting there and we have had some challenges. In that area, so it's really nice to see that we can't constructing that as part of the project. So there's a lot of utility works. I just wanted to tell you that because you'll, if you if you see it in the year, you think, wow, they're doing a lot of construction in the street and the city has worked with the applicant to include quite a bit of utility upgrades. As part of this project.
I would like to reiterate that one point that I believe that Harriet Tubman Road is key. To a lot of this development project to make it work. You know, if we want to have an exception for reduced parking in the garage, you know, we're expecting people to come from BART and take public transit. And instead of having them walk across. Millbrae Avenue, which is a big hazard. I see a lot of the pedestrian and circulation coming from Harriet Tubman Road. So if we can improve on that, then it would, you know, provide more access, we can more lighting. Security, safety, make it more walkable, enjoyable plantings on that side. And then also for emergency vehicles. Access and even circulation for cars. That there was a drawing in one of the documents that had a. Emergency vehicle plan where you had big giant fire trucks backing up into facility and doing a three-point turn off Adrian Road. I don't think that's gonna work. The better way would be to have them go through. The bar station and have a circulation loop and come out Adrian Road like one way. If that can be developed and you can have emergency vehicles parking along that road. And have access if needed for security and other emergency services, ambulance, et cetera. And then again. Was there a need for the city council or had the city council already approved of this? Land swap with the Millbrae, corner of Millbrae and Rawlins Road? Was that already approved?
It's an equal swap of land, so. It's included in the project vesting tentative parcel map.
So it's been approved?
No, it's before you tonight. The vesting tentative parcel map is before you tonight and included in the resolution with the findings presented for your review and action.
So I would suggest that, you know, when we do lose a little bit of that. Open space to make use of a swap of open spaces. I'd really like to see if. There's a circulation plan that comes from Harriet Tubman Road and then goes into the Paseo. From that way, even if it's partially open sometimes or gated and locked at nighttime, but I can see a lot of residents or BART station. You know, they they probably, I could see them preferring to walk that way and go across to like In-N-Out Burger and the community little commercial center there. And then go into the sale and go to the little. You know, public, public cafe onsite and go through that way. Rather than walk around the entire complex, Adrian Road and then. Go go around, so I think that would be a good use of a land swap if we lose that space, then have it. Look at the circulation path and have it walkable and enjoyable on a walking path. And then be able to come from the BART station, Harriet Tubman Road, go into the sale right away or across the street that way. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Quig.
Yes, can we go back to the parking structure? You know, you showed us, and if you showed us the parking structure itself, I missed it. How are you gonna decorate that so it it's, it looks nice?
Did you want to see a rendering, the the elevations of the parking structure? I think that might.
Yeah, what is it gonna look like? You know, it's close to the entrance to Millbrae. And I would hope that, and and I might have missed it, there was a lot of pages, there was. A lot of information that was given to us on Thursday night, quite honestly, over a holiday weekend and it's just been. A lot to absorb, so I just happened to think of it as we were talking about. So. That is the parking garage. Right, the one on the right?
One in the right.
Okay. And that's looking at it.
This is the Adrian Road elevation.
Okay.
And the intent is that the pattern on the metal screen. Is taking cues for from the metal panels of the adjacent building. So both structures can read as a cohesive design altogether. The color and. The color is gonna be also mimicking the one on the left. So both buildings can kind of have a. Kind of similar. Language.
And is there any greenery? I see a couple little plants, but down the bottom or going at it. It looks like you're trying to make it look like another building. Is that right?
Yeah, here's a vignette of of it. So a grade. It has, you know, the the street trees lining the sidewalk. When we have a sheer wall that serves as structure. We're gonna have vines growing over there. And you can see in more detail, the screen that it's. Arranged in different angles to cast shadow in different ways, so it's a little bit more playful than just a regular scrim.
Okay, and are are the vines gonna? Go up on that because. A large portion of it is, you're not gonna be able to see inside that white portion, right?
Exactly, the vines are gonna grow up to a certain height just for maintenance. But most of it is the screen that is gonna be shielding the view to inside the garage.
Yeah, and it looks like. And and it's gonna look like that all the way around, right?
On this side and on the. On this side and on the truck side.
Oh, the tracks are, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if I, if I can ask some questions and then I'll, or unless somebody has something. I know Commissioner Del Negro had some questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Quigg, did you not finish?
Yeah, I did. I was trying to.
No, thank you. I'm just trying to keep track of everybody on the squares. That's always tough. Actually, go ahead, Commissioner Del Negro.
Okay, well, I wanted to finish off two little questions here. One was on-street drop-off zones. Is there, people will be dropping, obviously, friends off at the buildings. Is there a specific site you expect people to do that? I obviously don't want to see it on Rollins Road blocking traffic, obviously.
There is. We noticed, but we do not have drop-off zones on that, on the public right away, no.
Okay, curious, because I've seen people, you know, just because they block traffic that way. And top level, the parking structure, is there parking on the top level as well underneath the full electric?
Yes, there is.
So I'll get some of the biology or the laboratory specific questions that I have. I saw obviously a location for a liquid nitrogen tank located between Millbury Avenue and Building Three. Was that the only liquid nitrogen tank on site as far as external tanks?
No, there is a location per building and there, it's fully, yeah, and it's fully screened in.
Fully screened. How tall are the tanks that you anticipate? Are you talking the gigantic 20-foot ones? You're talking?
No, it won't be the 20-foot one. It might end up being a farm, a smaller one. So we, it depends on the user and their needs, right? So that, that gets dictated a little bit later in the project, once we know who our users are.
I'm of course worried about the one.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm worried about the one at Millbury Avenue, visibility to Millbury Avenue itself, and whether or not, obviously, the proximity to cars to a tank that may be at that location. How high is the Millbury Ave pass at the site of that tank?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong, I believe that the tanks are both on, for Buildings One and Three are on Adrian, and for Building Two is actually on the backside of the two on the canal side.
I think it was in the Sequo, I saw that the actor located one of the tanks on the north east corner of Building Three. Says nitrogen tank on Figure 11 of the Sequo.
So so there is the Building Three at the corner of Adrian and Harriet Tubman.
Okay.
And that's shown as a vertical tank, if you scroll over Building Two. Building Two is located in the corner of the garage. And Building One, you can't see it, but it's right at that, right where Raul is got the hand.
That's better locations, obviously, for servicing them, filling them, et cetera.
That, that way the fill can happen right from the street.
All right. I did notice, though, obviously, on the Sequo document on Figure 11, they did show it actually at that upper, there's a nitrogen tank with an arrow pointing right next to Millbury Overpass, between the building and the overpass. Kind of where that little green square is.
So that must have been an error, yeah, leftover from an older plan. Is that one point in time it was on that side of the building?
Well, that solves a lot of my questions, because obviously I'm a little concerned about seeing liquid action tank from the freeway, or sorry, from Millbury Overpass, and of course, the height, car proximities, that sort of stuff. You anticipate nitrogen generators, other equipment onsite for some of your tenants?
I mean, we've seen some tenants coming in with their own nitrogen generator before, and if that's their wishes, we can definitely accommodate that.
Obviously, vivariums, security on vivariums. I see mostly the subterranean locations. That's fantastic. Auto-clating systems and venting systems are appropriate for those vivariums. Are they rooftop venting or? Okay, good.
Yep, all the, all the exhausts are on the roof, and we did an extensive wind study on the exhausts as well.
Okay, and as a property owner, do you have restrictions on species?
On what, sorry?
On species.
Uh, no, I don't believe so, but I'll, I can get back to you on that to be sure.
Some property owners restrict type of species they allow on your site due to public issues. I noticed in Building One, there seemed to be only one, one service elevator, and it's only 74 square foot. Is that true?
There is room for a second one. So day one, we're planning on putting in one, and if there, there is a need for a second one, there is room planned for a second elevator there.
Okay, that was the FUT elevator? That was kind of a holly overs future elevator?
Yes.
All right. Height coming in and out of the elevators, what's the overall height in the design, do you know? Service elevator, sometimes the.
You mean the, the door opening?
Not the elevator itself, but door access in the elevator room. I want to make sure there's not a height limit there.
Uh, I don't think there's a height limit there. We own a lot of lab buildings and, and we do anticipate being able to fit in some tall equipment into our elevators. So we always, we do have a standard, I can't, I can't recall off the top of my head, but we do have a standard opening size and ceiling height.
I've had three buildings I've moved into, all three buildings had a lower site because of fire doors there, and could not get a hood into a lab because of it. I just want to make sure that, obviously, for a fire door space, you actually are accommodating, you know, your equipment.
Yes, definitely. We, that, that's a frequent conversation. Can a few hoods fit through here?
Yeah. See. Yuri mentioned about the bulk chemical storage isotopes acceptable? You guys are accepting work with isotopes in the labs?
Um, I'm sure we can accommodate that. I haven't heard restrictions on that in our other buildings yet.
I'm only raising that flag because I want to make sure that our fire systems, that our local fire support is prepared for whatever type of materials, maybe at site for any type of company. Biotech is not something we've had before necessarily in Millbury. These are new, obviously, dangers that they have to be prepared to handle when they come in the door. So I was kind of hoping we'd find out, like, do you have a restriction or not on isotopes? Sounds like you don't.
Um, I, I can't answer that. I'm not sure, but I would definitely do my research and get back to you on that one.
That'd be nice. Thank you. Also, I did notice on the build, of course, the proximity to Mills High School, it is within a half mile. You know, obviously, there are air, air concerns. I obviously, the 409-page Sequo document is longer than my PhD thesis. I wasn't going to get that through that in a weekend. What are the mitigations necessary for Mills High School proximity as far as air quality? I know there's some fees.
I can handle this one if you'd like. Matthew Wisswell of LSA. For air quality, yeah, as you know, the, the the high school is within half a mile, but the, for construction purposes, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's basic construction, construction dust controls ensure that any, you know, pollution related to construction is handled on-site and adequately controlled. And then for operation purposes, any emissions from the buildings, they're, they're regulated by the San Antonio County Environmental Health Division and other applicable regulatory agencies, and all those things would be wrapped up in, in a hazardous building material, or hazardous building program that the, that the sponsor would be complying with. And I believe it's a permit that they have as well.
I'm sure a lot of parents would like to hear, obviously, that we're conscious of this. Is there any chance to time the worst type of environmental things with summer breaks, like building deconstruction, I'd assume? Is that a lineup with summertime? It would always be nice, obviously, from a risk perspective.
I will, I'll put that one to the applicant, but that's not something that's specifically required by the air quality district.
And I have one last question, more to staff, actually, which is an item seven within, obviously, the impact fees. I know the MSASP does have impact fees for park and recreation still for industrial and office. Did that not apply here, or is that incorporated somewhere else within the impact fees?
You know, yeah, this Darcy Smith again. I caught that too, and I think they're just unusual impact fees. But you are correct that there are impact fees that will be paid for, I don't want to say it's exactly parks and recreation, but it relates to those types of facilities in the city.
Eighty-four cents per square foot of industrial space and $3 and something cents.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, it might be of interest to the commission, so I can give you some information about impact fees. Just give me a second. I'm pulling up a spreadsheet. So this project, as estimated at this point in time, though I would be remiss if I didn't say that we're facing and in, an inflation increase of a whopping estimated 7.3% to our impact fees in January 1. So inflation is, these fees are indexed and they're going up January 1. So the project estimates for this project are, again, at this point in time, that the project would pay a little over $7 million in impact fees. And yeah, there isn't, the MSASP, it's called the Parks Impact Fee. And that is estimated at $2.1 million. And the other large impact fee is mobility infrastructure transportation. So we mentioned a lot of the improvements, but there's an estimated payment of about $2.35 million into the city's fund for mobility and infrastructure and transportation, which are largely bigger projects identified in the Millbury Stationary specific plan, which you've all read and familiar with.
Yeah, I just noticed that in item seven on the document, that it says there's no mitigations for recreation.
Yeah, so this is a little bit different, and it's not a true mitigation. It's an impact fee identified in the NEXA study for the specific plan.
It's accounted for though.
Yeah, it's accounted for. Don't worry. I, I, I know how to use Excel.
And a form of parking. Things for our city, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And that is it for me, Jean.
Thank you. Commissioner Quigg.
One really quick question, and it's probably, the parking garage is going to have 927 parking stalls, which is supposedly not even enough for the project itself. So how are they going to manage that so that people have a spot, or is it going to be just like, like the BART parking lot where you go and then when there's no more spots, there's no more spots? And is it going to be to the public at all? Used by the public at all, or could it be used for public?
Uh, we're not planned for this garage to be used for the public. You just mentioned where, I think our priority is our tenants.
Okay.
And so. Get the number of spots. I'm sorry?
Say tenant X is going to be allotted 10 parking spots, I guess, is something like that. Is that correct?
Yes, so usually it's depending on the size of their space in the building that calculates to how many spots they get. And the garage will be card access restricted, so you would have to have a key card to get into the garage, and the public won't be able to access it. And for visitors, we'll have a ticketing system where they can get in and out, but it'll have to be validated in some shape or form so that they can get out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Craig, I will also add that this use is a biotech life sciences use, which is typically less dense than a typical office use. The parking requirements that were specified in the MSASP is based off of the closest designation, which would be office. So this is being actually more conservative what, in terms of the parking requirement.
Okay, I don't see any other commissioners yet, so I'm going to go ahead and ask some of my questions. I have, one is, I'll just go straight from the parking, since Commissioner Quigg brought that up. I do actually have a concern regarding that. This is projected, project is projected to have 2,500 employees. And we're saying the garage will be at 927, even though the minimum for this area is 1244 for that, for the square footage. So we're looking at less than half of the employees will have a parking space. I know that for the station area plan, we did say it is lower, as it is, the parking amount is reduced. And we do that intentionally because, you know, we're trying to reduce, we're trying to encourage people to not drive and to use public transit, and we are close to our multimodal station. But I am, I'm just going to say it, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the number of parking being as low as it is. Was there any consideration of possibly having a further underground, a second underground? Is that even a possibility? A second level of the underground parking? Just to add a little bit more.
And so we haven't considered additional underground parking. Our experience is that our tenants have higher transit usage rate, so lower parking ratio has not been an issue, especially when we're close to transit. And a lot of companies also do offer transit shuttle service as well.
And are you planning to do any shuttle service? I didn't see that in the TD, in the transportation management plan. From other areas? I guess not, because you have the multiple stations right there. Um, okay, I mean, I'm just going to, I don't know, I guess the other commissioners are fine with it. I'm, I'm just going to say that I'm a little concerned about that, because once that's out and the parking garage is full, what are we looking at? You know, are we having people park across the street at, and that, that lot in and out and all the other places there is, is constantly full. And so I'm just visualizing that I'm not sure if it's realistic to, to have it this, this low. I'm hoping, and, and if you have data on, you know, biotech labs, you know, having more people who use transit, what do you call it, higher mass transit more, that would be good information to have, just because I'm, I am concerned about that. I do echo Commissioner Del Negro. I had that concern as well about the parking structure only having one ingress and egress. I think that, that is something that, if possible, to, to address that. I don't know how you would do that, but I'm also concerned about that. In terms of, so there was a quest for the FAR to be more dense for Building Two, I believe, and this is more of a question to staff. I'm not seeing that as part of the resolution, the FAR being higher. Is that not something that we need to be including in this resolution?
It's part of the, I can handle this question. So it's part of the design review findings. You can make, make that findings based off of design review standards, which speak to designed massive the structure and the condition of approval regarding the community benefits will be handled separately as a condition of approval to the planning commission, I'm sorry, city council later on.
So I'm not clear, because on our resolution, we actually have height exceptions specified, but we don't have the FAR specified, so I'm not, I, I'm not understanding why that's not included.
The the additional FAR is not a deviation from the development standard. So the additional FAR is, basically, the plan says that if you want, would like additional floor area, you have to enter into community benefits agreement. And there is no additional findings that need to be made. The reason why there's additional findings made for the height is because there was a deviation from the, from the MSASP. However, there aren't additional findings that, that need to be made according to the MSASP for the additional FAR.
And then on the building. And then on the building. Let's see, on the general, general requirements in the resolution. Number nine, when it talks about developer fees for school facilities. The beginning of that says all building permits shall pay school impact developer fees to both the sem. The Sematary Union, Union High School District. I think the wording on that is a little bit strange, so. Is it meant to say that all building permits shall pay the impact fees?
Well, all qualifying building permits, there's an exemption, not for this permit, but for projects that I think are single family additions of under 500 square feet.
Right, no, no, I'm just saying, here, right, the wording in here is saying that the permits shall pay the impact fees.
Oh, I see that, okay, yeah, a better wording would have been the applicant shall pay any required.
Along with the.
Impact developer fees, yeah, but the intent is still there.
Understood.
State law, they're definitely required to pay those fees.
Um, because I'm signing these resolutions, I take a lot of, you know, I look into that very carefully, so. I think if we can reformat that, just reword that to be, it's understood, but I think the applicant, it should say the applicant. In terms of, I, I did have a question about, as, I don't remember who brought it up, but the rideshare stops. Or stopping at all, or dropping off, if we're considering for the TDM. That we want to encourage people to do, you know, to use rideshare, we want to use, you know, other, other means of commuting. I think it's important to have a, a natural place for somebody to drop people off that is not on Rollins Road. And I don't know if that means they have to drive into Adrian and turn around, or, and then even then, where do you stop? So is there a place? That, that you already have in mind, or are there places, is there a place or are there places that you already have in mind, or? Can you point out what that would be on this site plan, what would be? What would be a natural place for people to do the drop offs, drop on drop offs?
Um, yeah, we should clarify that on the drawings, the drop off, the best location for the drop off is probably. Not where all the congestion is on Rollins or at the beginning of Adrian, but maybe past Harriet Tubman. Past the garage entrance where it's a little more quiet, but we'll clarify that.
That would be good, because I know when we were doing the Gateway Project, Gateway Project, we did actually. You know, they do have specified rideshare, drop on, drop offs, you know, to make it really obvious for somebody if they're, if they're calling, you know, calling a company. You know, to be able to know exactly where they're gonna meet those people, I think, meet their driver, I think that would be a good thing to have in there. In terms of, I believe, maybe I'm, it's, this is to staff, I believe we're not, signs are not, signage is not being included here, or is it? Because on the plans I saw like monument signs and things at the, at the. At the intersection with. Eight, with Rollins and El Camino. Rollins and El Camino, that I saw a monument sign there, but is that not being included in this plan, or?
Signage will be handled separately, so that, that'll require a sign permit, and it hasn't been included in here to the specificity that requires. To, to the findings to be made, so that, that'll be coming back to the planning commission.
So then the monument sign that was on that, on the plans that we saw, or even in the renderings, that's right at that corner, that's not gonna be coming up. And that's not actually included, is that correct?
That, that's more for illustrative purposes. And showing where the future signs would be proposed. But the, the findings for you tonight don't include specific signage. And that's something that will be evaluated as the, as the buildings get further refined.
Can you bring up, then next is Rollins Road in Millbury, if you can bring up that building. The, the elevation, we call it the elevation view or the rendering of that. Somebody can bring me them. Okay, this, this is fine, so I, I guess what I'm talking about is there's this little monument sign right at the bottom. Right hand corner in front, so that all of that seating and all of that is not included in the planning, right?
The seating is and the plazas, but not the signage.
Okay, so like this might be here, I'm, I'm moving my cursor, but where the sign is currently. There would be a planter or something there and then there might be sign on it, but that planter. That block would be there, is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's largely designed for the sign and we just anticipate bringing the signs back separately at a future planning.
But then that block will be there, so assuming those structures will be there, okay, great. So my thought on this is, the side facing Millbury Avenue. It would be nice if that could be a little nicer, if that could, because right now it looks like Rollin, what we're seeing is Rollins Road. And then when you see the part that's facing Millbury Avenue, that's, it's the side of a building is what it feels like. And so I'm, or that's what I'm, what I'm getting, so I'm wondering if it could be a little more, because it is a corner, a main corner. If it could be more. Where you do get a little bit more of the seating and friendly things going on, on the, on that side that's facing Millbury Avenue. Because that is visible to the street, to cars.
I, I think we're just looking at a shadow here. I, I don't know if the architects can bring up a rendering facing Millbury Avenue, but. I always say buildings have four sides and we don't want to ignore either any side, I just think you're looking at the shadow there that makes it look a little bit darker.
No, yeah, so it's not so much the darkness, but if you, I mean, that would be great to just have the visibility, I, I'm. I saw it at one point, but I can't find it because this packet is big, so. Just to see, okay, so this is, I think this is right. Right, so if you have here, the right side on this is what is facing Millbury Avenue. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm just saying, it might be, I, I'll leave it to the other commissioners, but I, I feel like it would be nice to have. This side that's facing El Camino, I mean, Millbury Avenue, look a little bit nicer or more inviting for, for people. So.
I do appreciate the transition from the TOD housing projects with this multi-use building here. Would be good to have a little bit more of that transition, especially like the north facing windows from building two, I believe. To be not all glass, because I think the people in the TOD projects that live there would object to having. Looking into, straight into office buildings across the street or having people in the office buildings just look right into their. Units too, so it'd be, could have more obscured or different design than just all glass peering into housing projects.
And so getting back to this corner, I just wanted to point out that what we're looking at is a, it's kind of like a walkway connecting us back to Harriet Tubman Road. And that's the walk in between Millbury Avenue and the building, right, and we're pretty limited in width, and then. I think a third of a way down or just right behind the amenities building, it's also a fire access road. So there is not much planting and decorating that we can do along that road.
Yeah, I just, again, it just looks like the side of buildings there to me, and that, that is going to be in access, so if there can be some, maybe some little more thought into that. You know, that's the side that most people driving in and out are gonna see, and. So that's, that's my concern on that. And then lighting, can you go a little bit into the lighting, because we didn't talk about that, so I know it's in the plans, but if you can just. Maybe go a little bit more into that. What the lighting plan is around there and.
Just bringing up the drawing. Okay, so what you can see, here is, here is the lighting plan for the Paseo and the street, the street fixtures are. As, as required by the city. There's a combination of, if you kind of go down to the. Go down to the cut sheets. It's a combination of, keep going down. So I'm just trying to bring up the cut sheets, so there's a combination of taller fixtures, which you can see in the upper right hand, left hand corner. And then bollard fixtures, which are just next to it there, and then you can see the Godco fixtures as well. Those are, and those are all tied in, so we're not trying to, again, we're, we're trying to create. An inviting environment, but not over light, but we do have to provide, obviously, exiting, exiting rubens, et cetera. Within, within the Paseo. I don't know if that's answering your, your questions, but.
Sure, and then is this the same on, how about Rollins Road, what is that?
What's that?
On Rollins Road, the, the facing, in front of the building, facing Rollins Road.
Back to the plan. So if you zoom in on Rollins Road. So you can see that we have the, the LE 107, that's a required street fixture from the city, and you can see them spaced out along Rollins Road. Actually, that's the same street fixture, actually, all the street fixtures are the same, the, it comes down Adrian, up to the other side of Adrian as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, that was just a question, because there was a lot to look through, so I just wanted to make sure to kind of get. Have an understanding of them, so that's it for my questions, did any other commissioners have questions?
Yeah, again, I would recommend similar.
Sorry, oh, Commissioner, Commissioner Wong, go ahead.
Again, I would recommend development of lighting and security along that Harriet Tubman Road, because. Again, I think people from the bar station will be walking under the underpass from Millbury Avenue and then up into the Paseo. Straight up shot on the left side there, next to Millbury Avenue.
Yeah, just wanted to comment, bring that up again, so you can see we have light fixtures that run down the Millbury Overpass, the LE 202s. And then along Harriet Tubman, and that bollard lighting, you know, along the, along the pathway to light the pathway. And then turns to the LE 107s as we go up, up Adrian Road.
I apologize if I spoke out of turn.
Oh, that's fine, I'm, I'm just trying to keep up with everybody, so Commissioner DeNego.
Actually, I was gonna ask the same thing, Commissioner Wong, really about that alleyway between Millbury Avenue and Building Three. And that's a dark, long corridor there, that's where I'd want to have lots of lighting, I'm not just worried about the neighbors across the street. With that lighting, because Millbury Overpass is there as a tall wall, so I want to make sure that's very well lit. In that quarter, kind of over to the left in this image. I wanted to get out a couple new questions that popped up for me, one is company signage, companies are gonna want to put their signs on buildings. Are you anticipating having signage up on the buildings or out front on the ground?
Uh, both, we're anticipating having both, and we wanted to think through it and come back with you with a. Well thought out package on where the signage is gonna be. Usually there's monument signs on the ground that has the building address and some tenant listing, and then. Definitely on the building, the tenants would love to have their signs on there, so we'll come back to you. And the planning commission for review at a later date.
I think my one concern would be something along what lines Commissioner Wong said, which is about the. Buildings, the housing across the street, as long as signs aren't directly blurring light into those buildings across the street. I may be worried about that impact on that side, a little less worried obviously about facing the freeway or facing towards the tracks.
Commissioner, I did want to point out, on drawing a 10.2 in your package is the foot candle lighting. And just as a, as a point of reference, an average foot candle of 1.0 would be exiting. So where you see foot candles along that way of five or, or 4.8 or, you know, three, 5.3, that's a very well lit street.
Wonderful.
Just want to point that out, that's a good.
Yeah, and our, our head of security for the Bay Area region has reviewed this project already. And there will be a lot of security along that back, the walk between Millbury Ave and our project. For that same reason, just security of the pedestrian and our tenants.
Okay, um, let's see here, the end of Adrian Road, and we talked about the drop off twice, I brought it up, and then Chair Joe brought it up as well. Is there not a chance of having a turnaround at the end of Adrian Road, just enough for a car not to have to make a three point turn? Then come back and drop people off at least in front of the parking structure on that side? I know that now it's just a dead end, you have to make like a three point turn to get out of there.
Yeah, I think that, that requires further study and also coordination with the project down the street to, to Adrian.
I'd like to see a turnaround there, so then people dropping off and go down, make a U-turn or make a circle turn. Exit back out in front of the parking structure, drop them off in front of those trees near the parking structure. You know, you're not in front of bicyclists, there's no reason for bicyclists to go down there. You know, the curbs are pretty open, be a great drop off zone. In front of your parking structure. I think it's important to talk about it, I, I'm read the document, I'm aware of it, but I think the public should be aware of wastewater from biotech labs. You know, things don't go down the drain, there's waste streams for everything in a biotech lab, if you don't mind, I want to make sure I can frame this, this conversation a little bit here. But however, regardless of that, all wastewater from labs are still captured in a separate waste stream that has a testing access point. For determining what the acidity level, contaminants that may be in the water itself. I see that you guys have that, I want to point out that it's there, I think the public should be aware of that there is a methodology for testing both. Exiting air and exiting water from laboratories. The question I would have for you, of course, is, is what types of lab based, is it all sinks in the labs are gonna be tied into that separate water system? An unpressurized system? That comes down to that waste.
So all that things go, yeah, all that things are tied to the lap waste, and then that goes through, there's that sampling port, like you said, upstream of. The sanitary sewer before it ties in.
Obviously, before you've identified, obviously, tenants and how they want to design their interior spaces. It, it sounds like all drains, floor drains, sink drains, except for bathrooms, may go there or kitchenettes may go there, is that correct?
Kitchen drain usually goes to the grease waistline, and then there's a grease interceptor that separates the grease before it ties into the sanitary sewer. Yeah, but we do have a separate lap waste line from the sanitary sewer, like the bathroom waste and the floor sink waste. So those go into separate lines.
Make sure the public's aware, there's a sampling methodology, particularly acidity, you're always looking for acidity in labs. The sign of waste. That was it for me.
Thank you, I used to work in a lab in my former life, and you're bringing back a lot of interesting thoughts and memories for me. I did have one more question regarding the fee. It's not a, not a fee, but the amount. The, I guess it is a fee, that's, that's in here, the, the amount that the developer is willing to pay for the. The, as a community benefit, it's very specific, is $1,478,649.23. And I was just curious as to where that came from, and do we need to specify that, because it sounds like it hasn't been. Agreed to by the city council, so can we in our resolution actually leave that out, or is there a reason to, for that number? And a reason why we should keep it in there?
It does need to be in there, because it's in the conditional approval, yeah. It does need to be in there because it's in the conditional approval. Yeah, the condition, the condition of approval sets forth the requirement to pay that amount. And then it will proceed to the planning commission for final review and incorporate it into the community benefits agreement.
To the city?
To the city council.
Okay, city council.
Yeah, but the condition of approval, right, is binding on the project and part of the project approvals. So and remember, the city council does not review this project unless appealed or called up. The planning commission has final authority and so it that warrants it being a condition of approval that's required to be met prior to permanent issuance.
Okay, and this this amount specifically needs to be in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and the amount came from a calculation that I worked on with the applicant around an appropriate amount relative to the city's linkage fees, which were adopted, the commercial linkage impact fees.
Okay, so it's just kind of, I'm just trying to get a good understanding of it because it's a little bit confusing that we're going to be, you know, if we approve it, we're going to be, this will be part of the conditions of approval. But then there's the city council has to agree to that. So I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. So is but is that the right understanding of it? That ultimately it is the council that does have to make the agreement?
So yeah, think of them as entering into the agreement, right, executing the agreement. They do that for other things related to projects sometimes. And sometimes final maps go to city councils, sometimes improvement agreements go to city councils. These are all things you may not normally see as planning commissioners because the city council has a purview to enter into legal agreements, right? So there may be a myriad of these that related to projects that you never see. So this is just one type of agreement that's executed between the city, right? So the city council has that execution authority whereby the planning commission is a quasi judicial appointed body doesn't. And so again, there may be other items that you read in the conditions of approval and you're, I just caught this one, but there's other things such as an improvement agreement, again, goes to council for authorization. The specificity here is needed because this is what the developer has elected and the city staff is recommending at this point. And you're approving the project. And so we didn't want to put the curb of what a how, of course, because you're approving, as Mr. Mata said, the designer view permit with the findings for the design that the added floor area that's being proposed here is an appropriate element of the design and architecture. And should you take action then to approve this project, then that agreement would goes to council again with potentially other agreements that are maybe less interesting, like an improvement agreement.
Okay, thank you. And and again, it's just a little bit interesting to me because it's the city council that enters into the agreement. But we're actually the ones approving, kind of, you know, doing the approval with, you know, having this be a condition of our approval. So interesting. Okay, well, how should we? I do think the, I mean, we brought up the ride share drop on or off. Is that something that we could incorporate into? Yes.
Can I just maybe show an exhibit really fast that might might help a little bit with this? Since that seems seem to be a major comment. Just give me one second to try to save this. So the city has been working with the adjacent property owner to 10 Adrian, who's proposing a different project there. And what we've been in conversations about, I don't know, I can't open this graphic. But maybe WRNS could just bring up the site plan one more time. Um, so we've been working with 210 Adrian, which is the chunk of property just directly to the west of this project site. Yeah. It's the white zone. So I apologize, but architects from for one project don't like to, you know, don't like to overstep their site. So what we've been working on with that project is improving the circulation there and adding a roadway accessway between the property adjacent to the railroad line. And so if you can just drag your cursor, yeah, back there. Yeah. And so I think so to address some of Commissioner Del Negro's comments around, will you just go down and it's a dead end? And it's a little bit of a constraint right away because the railway and some other property ownership. But essentially, if you can imagine, maybe just move your cursor like we're trying to create a route around then, which would allow cars to loop around. Yeah. And South Station Road, also known as Harriet Tubman renamed is one way out. And then this would allow traffic to flow back behind that new site. And again, we're still working on that project. And that would actually be in what we're trying to work on is two way traffic behind that building. So actually, I have a slide. So if you don't mind, let me screen share. I can pull up that slide. Just give me one second. Here we go. Um, let me bring in slideshow mode. Here we go. Okay. So yeah, what this shows is, and this is again, something we're working on. So it's preliminary preliminary, but it's what this, you know, city working with our consultants and public work staff very diligently has been trying to put in motion. And we think what this would help is improve circulation, including drop off, because we're not, we're not 100% positive about this, but there's a little notch out here for the 210 Adrian project. Although I will say half people think that's a good idea and half the people don't, only because sometimes it's not used and it takes, it reroutes the sidewalk and takes up a lot of land. So we're working on the final design for this project and that might be eliminated because again, it 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 has some drawbacks. But I think this might alleviate some of your concerns around circulation and trying to make efficiencies. And I'll just be honest, that most drop off, they kind of generally, especially if they're TNZs, they just stop where they want to stop. And hopefully it's short term and people get out really fast. But I would agree that we, you know, we need to say this a little bit more and look at it. And so we'll continue to work on this project, which is not ready for you, trailing a little bit behind this one and try to come out with an optimal design here.
Want to hear me speak on it, but yeah, I do worry that now you're gonna have people driving down Adrian just to drop people off at the TOD to avoid going through the TOD. That's gonna get really packed in.
So they can't get to the TO to the gateway project?
No, I'm saying people are gonna drive down Adrian and drop them off right there between the railroad and this building. Give them to walk. I worry about that.
Workshop, yeah.
But it also doesn't solve the drop off zone for this project. There's no identified location still.
No, so ideally, so most large campuses, they prefer, especially for like regular customers, employees and habitual visitors, employees to do it inside the garage just because it's kind of safest place. This garage is a little bit indirect. But generally, I've worked with a lot of big campuses and they'll put it, they'll mandate that the pin for drop off and pickup is inside the garage and kind of a safe spot.
That makes sense. There was there was two ingresses and egresses. So we're kind of at a conflict between facilities here.
Yeah.
I mean, I really want to see a change to this project. It allows for two egresses from this parking structure from a safety perspective and allows for a drop off. So those are the two things that I think have risen up to the level of concern.
Commissioner. So the garage was was designed by a garage engineer. It's done by Watree Design and, you know, most of the got traffic engineer and parking, they got parking engineer, but all they do or most of what they do is designing parking garages and parking lots. And since it's a private garage, it's not a public garage and the usage is a little different, the hours are different. Their recommendation was for the one driveway. And if there is a case of emergency, I guess the roll up gate would be up and the arms would be up and it's free egress if somebody needs to go, if everybody needs to evacuate, right? So I understand what you're saying. I just want to point out that we did hire a specialist to design the garage and that's what they came up, that this was their recommendation.
And be clear, I wouldn't expect two ingresses. I'd at least expect an emergency egress at another location.
Yeah, I would, I would just, I just talk a little bit about that, the parking structure. So the parking structure is designed as a flat deck, right, with a speed ramp configuration. And so what that does is it allows better, better better movement through the garage. And so when one comes down the speed ramp, right, one is facing at the at the exit, right? And so it's, it's a little bit cumbersome to come down a speed ramp and then turn. And so again, the Watree has done flow through analysis of this. And this is, this is what they're determining. And they're, they're a very good parking engineer company. So I understand that you're concerned, Commissioner, but I mean, there is a flow through analysis that shows how this that this operates.
This is Ellis Raskin from the city attorney's office. I just want to mention as well that the parking structure will be subject, of course, to all building code requirements, which do include some rather complex emergency ingress and egress requirements. So this will, of course, be subject to code.
And the building, and they have already reviewed this, yes. Yeah, I'm assuming, yes, I'm getting a yes from Darcy. Thank you. Commissioner Quig.
I guess it's just kind of a follow up from your question. And then Darcy came on and she, I I didn't hear a solution. All you kind of talked about was the building next door and it doesn't seem like she really answered Jean's question.
About the ride share pickup?
Yeah, a place to drop off people. I think that was your question, right? And and Darcy did a lot of talking, but I didn't hear an answer. Now, if there was an answer, let me know.
Well, theoretically, what I showed just creates a loop around the adjacent site.
Fine, but
There's a lower, which is a, we envision as a lower traffic volume loop, which means drop off could occur there because you could more easily, you know, stop, for example, on Harriet Tubman Red road between the two lobbies and drop someone off without blocking traffic. Because again, I said a lot of traffic engineers think, don't put in a dedicated spot, don't have a pullout, which then interrupts the sidewalk, reroutes it. And personally, I really prefer sidewalks, you know, adjacent to the street with nice planting strips rather than rerouting them. Or pulling into a garage, a garage can work on a larger campus, especially if the garage is part of the buildings. You can really urban areas like San Francisco, but it doesn't always work. So what I was trying to show is that we create sort of a lower volume loop where theoretically someone could easily be dropped off in the runway by pulling up to the curb.
Basically, though, that's talking about another project and it could or it couldn't happen. And and what happens in the meantime? I mean, you just brought up this other project and this is what could happen, but you don't know.
In the meantime, if this project proceed, I think the developer can look at a drop off pin inside the garage if there's a good location there. Or the bottom line is they would, they would pull up to the curb on Rollins Road. Or, you know, sometimes they also kind of nudge into loading zone spots because there's going to be a curb cut there, right, for the loading zone. It's going to be set back. And so definitely a lot of drivers will pull into a curb cut and rest there for a minute. It's hard for us to predict with absolute certainty how driver, what where drivers will drop off people, which is why I've had some success around like, like what SFO does. You can only pick up and drop off from TNZs at a certain pin location. But absent that, you know, again, we don't want to have a duck out where you're committing a lot of area to that and rerouting a sidewalk. That's generally the best practice around engineering right now. We talked about this with the buses. Remember, we said how Sam Trans doesn't even like bus pullouts because it takes them too long to get into traffic and that's through their policy. And again, cities then don't also like to do pretty big duck outs for drop off and pickup because again, a lot of times they just they just pulled in. Yeah, if we had on street parking here, we could look at a dedicated white zone. So maybe we, I should explain that too, that normally, like on El Camino in front of some restaurants or in front of a school, you might see a white zone. That's a special striping for passenger loading and pickup. But all of these streets Adrian in this area don't have on street parking, so we can't remove a parking stall or two and do a white zone on the street. But I will tell you that it's something, the city owns the streets and manages them. So it's something we'd be committing committed to, you know, to surveying and seeing sort of what, if it is a problem, what we can do. Because what we don't want to have is a, an issue where there's a lot of cars backing up traffic. For example, to Rollins Road or interfering with truck access or other turning movement. So it's sort of one of those things where after the TNZs exploded, right, the Uber and Lyft, it became more of an issue, but it's one of those things where it's hard to really predict with accuracy, the drivers patterns to figure out what what changes should we make to our roadways to ensure there's less traffic impact. So this is something we sort of have to keep an eye on and study more. I know I didn't answer your question fully, but evolving area. It's not a simple, there's not a simple solution here. We could remove like two parking spaces and do a white zone right in front of the lobby. But we could certainly look at the parking garage design. So if you want to, you know, make a motion with examining the parking garage, just anymore, you know, as the applicant said, they did hire a very specialized consultant, but we could take, take another look at that and see.
So can I, can I offer that we will, we will look at a drop off spot near the Paseo because that's centrally located or maybe a little bit further down. I would like to stay away from the garage because we are trying to heighten the security of the garages and that goes for all of Alexandria garages. And having Uber and Lyft and other rideshare being able to come in and out freely, that takes away from the security for us. And I agree with Dorothy. It needs to be studied because we have loading docks, right? We have two loading docks there. We have pedestrian crossings, so it needs to be studied. So we can't commit to you where it's going to be right at this moment, but definitely a good point and it's a concern for us as well. So we'll come back with, after we do some study with some suggestions and some ideas.
Commissioner Quig, I have you as first. I'm just going by how people look on my screen. Or is that fine for you?
She answered the question. I'm fine with that, with with that subject. I am just going to mention one really quick thing, and I know there's nothing we can really do about it. They've done the TDM plan. And they're very good. So supposedly, there's not going to be any impact. We'll let you know.
Commissioner Wong.
Right. So again, looking at the parking, I don't want to go in circles, but also that emergency services and vehicles and place for them that there's a drawing A304 leaves a lot to be desired in terms of it shows fire trucks doing three point turns. So I know, I think that staff has a lot of the issues that we're concerned about, that they continue to work with them on the detailed design and address those issues. I want to make a motion now to approve of the application. If that, if we had all our questions answered, I don't know if we need any further discussion. I would make a motion to approve of that application for the site development permit.
Oh, hold on. Sorry. Can we approve? Can we, can Mr. Mata bring up the revised language? Since we released the amended resolution, we just want to make sure you read it correctly into the record.
Dorsey, I apologize. This is Margot British on behalf of the applicant. I don't believe that you've closed the public hearing. You might want to do that.
We haven't quite gotten there yet. So
I wanted to finish a question.
If, yeah, and I think we still have some more questions. So if you don't mind, if it's okay, Commissioner Wong, if we can sit down home for a little bit and then Commissioner Del Negro.
So I'm not drifting away from the parking thing here. What is the use of the sidewalk in front of the parking structure between the railroad and the entrance and egress from the parking structure? Why do we need a sidewalk there? Why can't that be a drop off zone? And there's no, there's no, I guess there could be an emergency stairwell on that other end, it looks like. But I just don't see why, you know, we can't widen the street, make a U turn there and have a drop off zone. Outside of the park. outside of the parking structure. Not anywhere towards the railroad tracks on that side.
I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I think as part of the motion, if you want us to study this drop-off zone and look at that location or other locations, we can certainly do that.
I would agree with that. Also, I'm anticipating for TOD, you know, there's very limited turnaround for the TOD Gateway Project, so that it makes sense to, you know, have, have this fit into the bigger picture of thinking about Harriet Tubman Boulevard and having a, a loop that can go through TOD and come out on this end that would benefit the whole area, neighborhood. Otherwise, they're looking at the same issues over in TOD project, having to do all these turnarounds and dead-end loops and, or end of the street loops. Big, I think the ultimate solution would just be widen Harriet Tubman Boulevard, but I'm not sure people want to take up their properties to widen the street, but you know, there needs to be room for emergency vehicles, not just parking and drop-offs and circulation through the TOD project and people coming out that way. And then also, a lot of people, again, walking from the BART station over to this facility to.
Commissioner Wong, if I could just interject as well, section nine of the sequel analysis did discuss potential impacts with respect to emergency vehicle access and the analysis determined there would be no significant impacts with respect to emergency vehicle access. So I did want to just quickly address that aspect of your comments.
I'm not sure I would agree with that, because if you pull up A304, it shows large ladder trucks, fire trucks doing three-point turns. If any of those facilities are on fire, they're not gonna make a three-point turn into the facility. It's kind of odd to me.
Commissioner Wong, I did want to bring up that the, that this plan was reviewed by Christine Reed. And she's actually approved this plan and actually did ask for that three-point, the three-point turn you see against Millbrae was actually a suggestion by Christine Reed. We actually had a flow-through that went all the way to Rollins, but this was preferred by the fire, by the fire department.
Can bring that up, A304? So if you zoom in here and you can see the large ladder fire trucks and they have a path where they would be expected to make a turnaround here.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Wong, I mean, we, I think we get what you're saying. What they're saying is that this has already been reviewed.
I just want to put it on record, yeah.
Sure, understood. But, but they, they said that has been reviewed and it was actually, this is the preferred.
Yeah.
What, what they.
Right. So the blue trucks would have to, fire trucks would have to go back into building three and then do a three-point turn. If the building three was on fire, I'm not sure what they would.
No, no, hang on. The blue is not a fire truck. The green, the green is fire trucks. Blue is, blue is loading and the green is, and the green is fire. So they don't, they don't use the building loading dock to turn. For building two, the, the fire truck access is given all the way around building two as requested by the fire department. There's then access for the back of the garage, right? Well, that's the three-point turn for the back of the garage. That's there. Then obviously Harriet Tubman Road, and then this is what this, this is what the fire department requested, was this three-point turn, and this is what we accommodated for them. So originally, our original plan had the fire truck along Millbrae exiting out onto Rollins. But the preferred scheme from, from Christine Reed was that to add this three-point turn instead of going out to Rollins.
Thank you for that clarification.
Do we have any other questions? Any, any design comments or questions? We've gone through a lot. I mean, this is all related, obviously, but in terms of the building itself. Okay, can we, can we go ahead and close our public public hearing session, public comment session, I guess.
Take the motion, we close the public comment section.
Your motion, second?
Second.
In a second, vote please.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment is closed.
Thank you. Can, do we have any motions or discussion further? I guess we've already discussed, but do we have any motions?
I think we've discussed, discussed and discussed.
I think Commissioner Wong wanted to do, do a motion, so I'll give you the first, if you'd like to do it, if you're still willing to do that.
To make sure I get the right.
We have it up on the screen. The staff has put it up on the screen for you, so.
Any other closing comments, I guess. I don't see any reason to hold back on proceeding with granting this. There are a lot of issues that we've discussed. Hopefully, staff can take note of those and work with the developer put those into the final detailed design. But pending that, I would recommend adopting, make a motion to adopt amended resolution approving site development plans, design review permit, pressing tentative parcel map, height exception, conditional use permit, make findings, approval, sequel analysis, and adopt an MMRP and statement of overriding considerations to allow life sciences campus, which include three lab office buildings and amenity building and a parking structure on a 4.71 acre site located at 231 Millbrae Avenue, 620 and 30 Rollins Road and 201, 230 and 231 Adrian Road. Pending vote and any other comments by commissioners?
A second.
You were too quick.
We have a second. Did we want to add anything about the ride share or do we need to do that?
I think something has to be added in here myself.
I'm getting a yes and a no, staff, but.
There, there is a motion and a second, so typically it proceeds as made unless the original person who makes the motion wants to amend it, but you have our word that we will listen to your comments and diligently make a good faith effort to address it.
Okay, is that, is that okay then with everybody?
Okay, by me.
Commissioner Wong? You made the motion. Okay, since you made the motion. Okay, so can we, do we have any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion in a second, so let's call for the vote.
Commissioner Del Negro?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Del Negro voting no.
Do we have any statement from Commissioner Del Negro on opposed?
It's gonna come down to the, to the two issues for me, which is the ingress egress, it's not safe in that parking structure. I know it's passed whatever said from legal, but I feel uncomfortable with the parking structures only one in and out and the no turnaround zone. Sorry, no drop-off. So I think those two things have dramatic impact on the local safety of the project.
Well, so we have already voted, so it's, the motion does pass. Does this have, this also has the appeal period? I would assume that there's a 10-day appeal period as, as for projects, other projects. And just as a final note, I would say, I would, I mean, staff has said they're gonna you know, look into those things that were mentioned. So especially with the circulation and the drop-off, drop, drop on, drop, drop off, get on. But having said that, I would, I just wanted to put in there that I think it's, it's exciting to see the project. I know we're kind of picking through it, which we want to, which I feel like we should do, but it's, it's exciting to see that hopefully this project will be coming up and it looks beautiful. So I just want to put that out there and to thank especially the staff for all your work on it. Literally, this packet was, I think, 25, 30 pounds worth. So there was a lot of work that went into this and so I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank the applicants as well and really looking forward to having a, a good new building, we're a good new project. And it's nice to have life sciences coming to Millbrae. So I think that's, that's also exciting to see. So again, there's a 10-day appeal period and we and hopefully we'll be able to see things moving forward.
Chair, I would like to close out my dissent statement. One detail, which is the project overall is lovely. I love seeing life science come to Millbrae as well. I don't object to the buildings themselves, the design, the incorporation of the street design for the, for the bicyclists. I'm very happy with the project. It's simply those elements that I mentioned that I'm discussing.
Yep, understood. So if we can, staff can take that into advisement, it is on record. So thank you very much for making that clear. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to item number five, which is new business, and I don't see anything in here. So item number six is staff updates. So updates on the submitted planning applications and the future planning commission meetings. And this is just an informational item.
I guess Chair Joe and Plank Commissioners, we are scheduled for planning commission meeting on December 20. We have one item for that for that meeting. It's for an addition to a single-family home. And that, that will conclude planning commission meetings for, for the year of 2021. We'll be back in January. So far, we don't have any scheduled public hearings for the first meeting in January, which is January 3rd. So that any, any last-minute signals, we, we may be canceling that, but please reserve that in case there are any last-minute changes. I don't have any other meetings, any other staff updates at this time.
Did you, okay, so I think.
I have a staff update in case you weren't following the special city council meeting last Wednesday night. They reviewed, well, they, there was an item that was requested to be on the agenda by one of our council members to examine an urgency ordinance around Senate Bill 9. And the council directed staff in the city attorney office to prepare that urgency ordinance. And right now it appears likely, pretty certain, it's going to a special meeting Thursday, this Thursday at noon. And that would be an urgency ordinance establishing called interim regulations for two-unit residential developments and urban lot splits in single-family residential zones to locally implement California State Statutes Chapter 162 or Senate Bill 9. We are working, as I think Mr. Ma's told you or you might have heard, on a, on a formal ordinance with a consultant firm, Placeworks, that was authorized by the city council on October 26th as a zoning ordinance, which would come before you at a public hearing for review. And we also plan a community workshop and a joint planning commission city council study session. But those per the schedule that our consultant prepared with help of the city wouldn't be held until next year. Just takes a lot of time to get, as you know, those joint planning commission city council workshops together and the community workshops. This is all in the staff reports. But I just wanted to mention to you that the city council is considering this urgency ordinance. It's not ready yet, but if it proceeds to the special meeting of the city council on Thursday, then it would be available online. And then again, ultimately, next year, we would come back before you for a study session and then ultimately a public hearing to review that zoning ordinance. I just want you to be aware of it so that you could read the staff report and learn about that item, because it does affect zoning. And it's, it, it's not typical to have an urgency ordinance, but if you want to read more about it in the staff report, I'd invite you to do that, just to learn more about it.
Thank you. I was gonna ask you about that, so that was on my list here. The other thing I think is that there is the in-meeting, in-person meetings. I think there's also the city council decided to postpone that still for
Yes.
at least another month, right?
Yes.
So just to note that. Commissioner Davis?
Hi. So you're thinking you're canceling the January 3rd meeting and then our second meeting of the month falls on Martin Luther King Day. So there you go. We might have, we'll have to move that if we're gonna have a meeting in January.
Yeah, we'll likely reschedule that to another date TBD.
We can probably talk at the next meeting. So is that it for the staff updates or didn't? Commissioner, do you have a question for the staff?
I do. It has to do with the staff update. So at the next meeting, is that that 9:30 Hillcrest?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go to item number seven, planning commission announcements. Any announcements?
If anybody watched the tree lighting, it was a fantastic event. Lots of people, very safe for the kids. The street was closed off. I did get some people that were a little disappointed because in past years, it's been televised live and this year it wasn't. So there was people, some of the older people also in town like to watch it on TV and don't necessarily want to come down. So I think I'm gonna have to talk to Sarah, you know, and find out why they didn't do it. But it was, it was a really nice event and thank you to all of you that supported the Millbrae Community Foundation with donations and stars. Looks great. I think the tree looks wonderful.
Any other commissioner comments? No, I was gonna say happy, happy new year and holidays to everybody, but we'll be seeing you next week. So we have one more. I forgot. So we have one more, but if we seeing none, I will go ahead, let's go ahead and adjourn our meeting for today. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.